So it's 7:01, I'm going to call the meeting to order of the school committee for Monday, June 1st. If everyone can stand and say the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
Eileen?
Yeah, Eileen, just so you know, we have LATV recording as well. Awesome. That's wonderful. I'm going to read our school committee meeting statement, and then we'll go to the open forum. The committee represents the needs of all Lemonster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise a leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemonster. Now we'll move on to the open forum. If anybody is on a call or wishes to address the committee, please do so now. If anybody in the public would like to address the committee, this is your opportunity to state your name and address. And one last final time, if anybody is in the public wanting to address the committee, this is the time to do so. Having no one come forward, we'll move right on to Communications Superintendent.
There are no people in this evening?
Okay, and then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Eileen, you stop me if I get muted in there.
Okay.
Thank you. So there's been quite a bit happening, and happy June, everyone. I think we had somewhat of a springtime. The weather has seemed to help lift spirits a little bit, so that's good news. Last Thursday, we celebrated the LCE graduation. This was student-driven, and literally student-driven and staff-driven. We drove to each senior's home and celebrated them individually. Their teacher advisor wrote a beautiful honorarium for each one of them, and they were presented with their degrees, and they came out in celebration of one another. So we spent last Thursday as a team making sure that everyone was honored from LCE. We also today, and a little bit more tomorrow, we are recording the scholarship announcements. This is a really nice bright spot for our students moving on. Hundreds of thousands of dollars are given for students for the next stage of their life. And so we are recording it just to make sure that every senior scholarship recipient is getting their due diligence and their honor, and that will be broadcast on June 4th. So we will send out the details of time where anyone can see it. We hope it runs over and over again because it's such a super celebration. And again, that will begin on June 4th. Enrollment has been extremely busy. So even though, and I've said it over and over again, even though our buildings may be closed for protection's sake, the school department is 100% open. Parents have been calling for enrollment, and we are enrolling nonstop. We are doing most of it virtually, but we do have drop boxes if there are documents or something specific that we need, transcripts, records, whatever that may be. All that we ask is that you call our parent information center for an appointment, because if we do need to meet with you physically and safely, we will do that. But up until this point, it's been nonstop in that office, so that's great news. And our fourth celebration today, and I'm sure you'll hear more from Chartwell themselves, Bob and Chris, I can't say enough about what you've done for the children of Lemonster. Two meals a day, seven days a week, whatever it takes. And we now know that we have secured food for children of Lemonster through the summer. So we will continue the efforts, and I can't say how proud I am to know that food insecurity will not ever be a barrier for children in Lemonster, and the efforts that Chartwell has put out is commendable. So Bob, Chris, your whole team, thank you for everything that you're doing. It's well appreciated, and the meals are fantastic. And we've had some surprises in some of the meals. We had Beanie Baby donations, we had pretzel donations, we've had farm-fresh vegetable donations. It's been nonstop, so thank you very much. And then we have three big-ticket items that I want to put out there for the community to understand what is really happening in our central focus. The first one is, we have been working on the FY21 learning platform seven days a week for months. We have developed no less than four solid learning platforms, anywhere from a complete remote distant learning platform to a hybrid, which we will explain further, all the way out to a full reopening of the doors. We've also looked at sort of marrying multiple scenarios. We may have to look at some remote, some hybrid, we're open. So once we receive the announcement, which we've been told is in two weeks, that there are some models in which to work, we're hoping what we've created will land nice and easy into one of these plans so that we can get back to some somewhat of normalcy. One of the compelling factors right now is, the school department did receive some federal cares money to help with the COVID initiative, ensuring that our schools are up and running and safe. We've been working very closely with the city side because they received separate cares money, which is identified for the entire city. So if there's anything that we can do in collaboration with the city to do the best we can for our populace, the school department side has very specific spending requirements, as does the municipal side. So we're trying to mirror efforts. We're really trying to hold on to as many people as we can, because the third concern for us in all of this is, we don't know what's going to happen with budgets. We're hearing all sorts of stories, very ambiguous, and a lot of negativity. So with all the scenarios, we've painted another four budget scenarios so that once we receive word one way or the other, Lemonster Public Schools has to be up and running, because right now, students and staff are our main focus. So all of this is in consideration. We also have let families know that we will be reaching out to them. We need to survey our community and say, hey, what's going to work for us? And that will help with our further development and our planning moving forward. All information has been coming out slowly, but as soon as I get it, you will have it, and our community will be a part of it. So stay tuned. I think the next two weeks will be extremely busy for the Lemonster Public School system. Thank you. Sorry, didn't unmute. Thank you very much, Paula. That certainly a lot has been happening in our district, and it's nice to hear of the many positive things. And congratulations to all the LCE students who graduated. That's wonderful. So we're going to move on to Chartwell's presentation. And Bob and Chris, I turn it over to you. And I do want to echo Paula's sentiment. Thank you so much for providing all the meals, seven days a week, two meals a day for all of our students. That's incredible. And I know you and your staff have been working very diligently, and I appreciate that. So with that, take over. Bob, you just have to unmute. Okay.
Okay, I think I got it. You guys can handle it, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us tonight. With me, obviously, is my Boston District Manager, Chris Callahan. And before I get into the end-of-the-year financials, I kind of want to take a few minutes to talk about what we've been doing during this pandemic. Since March 16th, we've been running a state-approved program, Grab and Go program. We serve Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. But as Paula stated earlier, we are giving out seven days a week, excuse me, seven days on meals, so breakfast and lunch for the full seven days. It's funny because we started off, first day, we did less than 200, and now we're averaging a little over 1,100. Sometimes, some days, we're getting 1,200 per day. And, you know, the total right now, to this afternoon, we did 45,000 breakfasts and 45,000 lunches at this point. So we're getting close to that 100,000 mark, so it's a great accomplishment. And the sites that we're serving out of, we are serving out of the high school, Francis Drake, Albrook, and Johnny Appleseed. We're also delivering to a couple apartment complexes, State Street and Litchfield. And we also have Vanpool helping us out, doing door-to-door deliveries as well. The biggest thing is how smooth this has actually started off and has been running this program. You know, it's because of all the support and the great team we have in Lemonster and in Chartwell's as well as our company. You know, I really want to give a special thanks to Paula Deacon and Jenny Monday for organizing a lot of these sites and deliveries, and the constant communication that, you know, I have with them each day. And, you know, whenever I need them, they're right there for me. So they've been great as well. Also like to thank the principals, the teachers who helped out, you know, deliveries those first couple of weeks when we really didn't have anybody. And each school, you know, took a day or two and just went and delivered to these sites, you know, these sites we serve, you know, close to 700 at these sites. So they took it amongst themselves to volunteer and do that. I also like to thank the mayor's office for taking over the deliveries after the teachers and the principals were through. And we're currently working with emergency management in doing so as well. And of course, the Vanpool has been absolutely great as well, going door-to-door. And they do about 157 door-to-door meals a day for us as well, so it's been a great thing. And as Paula stated earlier, you know, we got a lot of donations, and we also received some grants. We received over $9,000 in grant money since March 16th, and from the New England Dairy Council, Project Bread, and the EOS Foundation. We've got some great donations as well. I mean, I can't say enough about people who stepped up, donated. Bill Deacon of Eastern Standard Company, he donated over 10,000 pretzels for the unity of Lemonster. And now, we're constantly passing those out, and he keeps asking, do you want more? Do you want more? So we can always get more pretzels. Would I still like to thank Tino's Vending for donating over 3,000 snacks to us as well to, you know, give out to the families as well. We also received an additional $10,000 from the current DOD fruit and vegetable program that we're on. So that's going to extend us right through May and June, when normally that would run out about mid-May. So we got an additional $10,000 for that particular program. And we also signed up for a five-week USDA, it's called a Buy and Fresh program, where they pack fresh produce boxes. And we receive about 112 a week. And we pass those 112 boxes out to our, you know, to our community as well, when they pick up their lunches. And that consists of like apples, oranges, pears, cantaloupes, potatoes, lettuce, tomatoes, cucumbers, onions, peppers, and so on and so forth. And those boxes weigh about 12 to 15 pounds, there's a lot in them. So we're great to have that until the end of this, till the end of June. And also, we got a great Beanie Baby donation, which was great because we gave them to the Vanpool, and they know exactly who to give them to because they deliver to the young kids and put a lot of smiles on their faces as well. So that's kind of what we're up to the last three months. A couple of additional things I want to just add before I get into the financial piece is that CEP, about the CEP program for the upcoming year. What is CEP? CEP is a program, the USDA program, that lets students have at no charge a breakfast and a lunch. We currently have five schools that are on a CEP program. And I can't say enough about the PIC Center and Jenny Monday and Tina Pilgrim, what they're doing to try to make us full CEP. So hopefully, you know, we'll find out within the next month or so if we get this program and the whole district can become CEP. So we're keeping our fingers crossed on that, so.
And that will really help in the fall, Bob.
Yes.
Absolutely. Get that accountability.
Yeah, and getting into the summer and the fall. And as Paula stated earlier, we are going to run this program right through the summer, the same exact program. So hopefully, you know, everything will line up and will continue to produce the amount of meals we're doing, if not more, to give them that security they need for food, right up until August 31st. If we open up early, then we stop the program, and that's fine. But we've got it at least until August 31st. And we're also going to be gearing up for the fall as well. I mean, I've been working closely with Chris Callahan in our company, and we've been coming up with different programs and ready to assist Lemonster when they're ready to make a decision on what route they might choose. And we know that, you know, school to school could be different. And we could run the program at one school and run a totally program, totally different program at another school. And we're going to be ready for that as well. So we'll be working hand in hand. All right, so I just want to dive into the financials. Everybody got a copy of the financials in the report. And this is going to kind of, these are estimates, and these are going to show us where we're going to be towards the end of the year. As you can see, it's an Excel sheet. We have five columns, the total columns at the final. But we ended up, the first column was March, and the end of March was our totals. March was a little unique because we had half was regular school, then the other half was, they call it the summer feeding program. And so we ended up just to show you where we would have been in March moving forward. And then we picked it up, you know, April, May, and June with their summer feeding program, as they would call it, our Grab and Go program. And like I said, these are our estimates, and they'll be really close to what we're going to be at. And obviously, the first counts are just meal counts, the top two lines will talk about lunch and breakfast. And the second half, I mean, the second part goes into revenue, which talks about our receipts from the reimbursements, universal breakfasts we got for April, and where we are for the totals for that. And obviously, the last column is our totals for revenue for the reimbursements and sales that we had during the year. And the last part is our expenses. And these are, you know, product costs, national volume discount is rebates. We are a very large company, so we get some great rebates back from all our food purchases. So that's always a great number to have, and does a great job to adjust our food costs as well. And just moving down the list, it talks about, you know, total personnel, that's labor, semi-aerial costs, administrative charges, and management fee. And if you look down to the bottom right corner, it shows you what return to the client will be, bottom right corner. And just keep in mind, that's the return that we're contractually responsible. There are going to be other expenses that are in the revolving account that we don't, that we're not responsible for, such as maintenance, repairs, things like that, purchases of equipment, things of that nature. And we've had quite a bit of those this year. You know, one is just because of the fact that, due to the upgrade of Windows, all our computers in our office, as well as our POS systems, all had to be upgraded. And that was about almost $50,000 in just upgrades for those computers. So, you know, I mean, I worked with Melanie and Glenn, you know, the next month or so to see where actually the revolving number, where we're actually at. We did come in profitable at the beginning of the year with a positive account, and we still should remain positive. I don't see why we wouldn't, as the year ends. And like I said, all this money goes back into the department. And we want to upgrade, we want to make, you know, equipment better, you know, things of that nature. And we made some equipment purchases as well. And we've also had some grants during the year that we got to make a few purchases through those grants as well. We always look, our company does a great job of posting grants and making sure we go, at least apply for them. If we get them, we get them. A lot of times we do, so we constantly do grants.
So our revolving account, our revolving account is very, very healthy as it stands now. So it's, that's really important. There's a certain threshold too, that the state likes to see us holding that revolving account. So the good thing is, over the last 10 years, we've been able to grow that account. So to have those repairs and being able to cover those repairs and maintenance is, it's really helping the program. But we still have money in that account, which is great.
So if there's any questions or anything we talked about, or anything moving forward, please let us know.
Would anybody else like to raise a question, or either Bob or Chris? Bob, how soon do you think you'll have that CEP confirmation?
Well, Jenny and I were talking today, they're slowly, they're working with Bridget up at the, up at the state. So they're constantly in communication with her, and they're kind of handling that whole thing. And they just, you know, a little pop of question on me, hey, do we do this, do we do that, type of thing. But they're getting close. They did extend that, Paula, because it was due in April. Obviously, with the happenings, they moved it, I believe, to the end of June. So, and like I said, Jenny's working on that, Tina, so they're looking pretty good.
It looks like we're very close. And plus, a lot of their circumstances, circumstances have changed. So if we become a full district, that's a game changer.
Huge.
Yeah.
Nice work. Thank you.
And also, just a note too, I know that we've been working behind the scenes too, just like Paula had mentioned, on different scenarios. Even though, you know, we're waiting for information from the state as well as USDA in terms of, you know, the waivers that they may continue into the summer and the fall. So we should get information very shortly. But again, for our point, we just can't wait either. We have to start planning. So we'll work very closely with you all to make sure that you've got the right program in the summer as well as in the fall. And we'll gear it and give you recommendations, what we think is best for the district. But again, follow whatever you need us to do to make sure that the kids are getting fed. That's most important.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Bob and Chris. Oh, Melissa, did you have something? You have to unmute.
So it was just more in lines with the community, the CEP was, or, I don't know, with the rolling deadlines and things changing, are families still being encouraged to fill out applications for free or low?
Yes.
Us lunch, because obviously, as we're seeing parents either at drop-off or picking up lunches, those families are the ones that are, you know, most likely needing the food assistance and may not have needed it in the past to know to fill out the applications.
Yes, so those requests are coming from multiple areas. We have sort of the schools because they have the most intimate relationship with the families. And so there are quite a few families that have disclosed, and for other reasons, they felt safe doing it with either the building principal or someone there, instead of bringing it down to the PIC Center. So it's, it's sort of, we're spreading the wealth on that, but it is a growing trend.
Good point, though. Really good point.
Sue, had you wanted to say something? You have to unmute. Sue, you need to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I just wanted to thank you guys for all your hard work and for reaching out to the students in Lemonster. We really appreciate your efforts. And again, it confirms our decision to go with Chartwell's was the best one we've made. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have a wonderful team.
Yes, we do.
Definitely do. So, great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it, gentlemen. And if we don't hear from you soon, have a enjoyable summer.
Thank you.
Every day. Bye, guys.
Bye.
So we're going to move right on to the remote summer school plan. Yes, so I thought Chris did a great segue when he just said, we're all tired of waiting, and some decisions have to be made. And at some point, the school system, we need to move forward. And one of the programs that we said, let's make a decision and stick with it, was about summer school, because summer school takes so much planning and effort. So we've made a commitment to this remote platform in which Kim and Renee are working together. So I asked them tonight to sort of lay it out so that we can all be knowledgeable and really eloquent in celebrating that we made a really good decision finally. So, Kim?
Yeah, I'm happy to start. Hello, everyone. Nice to see all of you. So we, you know, usually for our summer school program, we usually start off by sending out applications and asking parents to sign up for summer school. And this year, we decided to make personal phone calls to every family and to find out, you know, if there's, explain a little bit about what remote might look like for the summer, hear what some of their concerns were, sort of identify what kind of resources they had and what kind of technology they had available, and kind of talk through some of their questions. And then we were able to start making our list of what students are going to be attending summer school. I was fortunate enough that just before the pandemic, I had already hired my summer school coordinators. And so we've been talking about this actually for quite a while and thinking about, you know, how we were going to start organizing all of our information for summer school. So for right now, we have all of the students signed up. We have teachers that have applied, related service providers who have applied. I actually met with the coordinators today, together today, to just talk about, you know, how we're going to group our students, what is the best way to support them, what other resources are we going to need. The next step is going to be sending a letter home to families and letting them know who their contact person is going to be, and what their summer program is going to look like. It's going to look a lot, very similar to probably their students' plan now, except we're going to have some themes that we're going to be putting together. We're going to make sure that students have at least daily some kind of a virtual session. It may be a Google Classroom, it could be a Zoom call, it could be a pre-recorded lesson. And it's also going to go by their IEP. We're going to definitely be memorializing that for students. Some students are only going to be meeting with us twice a week, where other students are going to be meeting with us four times a week. There's going to be some guidance for students to do some independent work at home, and there's going to be some office hours that the summer teachers are going to have so that parents can have a place to talk to somebody if there's a challenge, and there'll be also an opportunity for some follow-up. Some students will also be getting OTPT speech, depending on what their summer program calls for. We're continuing to look for guidance from, you know, the Department of Ed around, you know, if there is an opportunity to do any kind of face-to-face over the summer, we're really looking for the Department of Ed to give us some guidance and to determine too, you know, if we have everything in place for that to be safe. So we're not really sure that that's what's going to unfold, but we know for sure that we're going to be able to offer a remote summer program for our students. So Renee, I don't know if you want to jump in?
Sure. Hi, good evening. Nice to see everybody. We are, I worked with my ELL staff, K through 12. We're offering summer school remote virtual learning for grades 1 through 11. And we're aiming our sights at levels 1, 2s, and 3s. So we have made contact with families by either phone and survey that was sent out to all families. We sent out 100 to 172 students. We had 99 students' parents respond to the survey, with right now 95 students participating in summer school remote learning. Our summer school remote learning is only going to be about four weeks long. It's July 6th through July 30th. We have hired staff. We are going with the theme based at the younger ages, and a little bit of different approach at the older levels. But they are going to have, they'll all have a little bag full of materials at home, like whiteboards and stuff like that. So we will be doing some team teaching around some virtual lessons for our students, because as you know, our ELL students, we need to get them speaking and interacting orally with each other. So this is really an important aspect with my ELL staff, that those are being done. So as of, same as the sped, they will be doing virtual lessons with students, where they can participate, hopefully. they can participate hopefully in small groups and they will also be assigning some lessons and then coming back to them in an hour or so to see what their responses were, how they did on that, to share out their ideas with them and their classmates. So once again, we did the survey that included what we need for technology, do they need internet and we have gathered all that information, so myself and Steve will be looking at who we need to give Chromebooks out to. There's only a few, believe it or not, most of our students have the Chromebooks that were given out already and we only had a couple of families who were not still able to connect with the internet with Comcast, so we'll be working with them on the hotspots. I think that, like I said, it's just major, just getting students, they're excited to see a teacher in front of them, they're excited to participate, they'll have their reading book for the summer reading program available to them and I think that's really exciting that we are able to do this and I think the kids are very excited. Omira will be reaching out to all the parents at the end of the month to just verify when pickup for the bags will be and to make sure they're still participating and identify who their teacher will be. We've had a lot of unique proposals in this where we've had teachers of twos and threes come and they'll be teaching different grade levels, but the same subject area, so I think the students are going to enjoy it and I'm looking forward to it.
Renee, quick, I was going to say Renee, a quick question, I know you mentioned Chromebooks for that group, are there still children out there or families who maybe have multiple students in our school system and only one Chromebook? Is there a plan to make sure that every child or at least, you know, there's enough technology to go around?
I think so, I think that we're working on that, like, so we know that there's, you know, some of our high school, we have a small group at the high school level, but a lot of our high school ELLs got the Chromebooks, so they're giving them to their siblings for the summer because obviously they're working, we've had a couple say that they're working during the day at Market Basket or Hannah Fitts and stuff, so they're not able to participate virtually, but they're still going to have some access to that Google Classroom, so if they want to look at what's going on or if they want to participate, they're more than welcome to, check in with us every day because this will be time, their work schedules and I do, Steve and Lorraine and everybody, we're working on getting those Chromebooks out to people and I think that has to do with what we're just trying to make sure that our students are going to have the necessary materials ready to go in the fall for what we need.
Yeah, thank you. Great point. When we first did the initial rollout of Chromebooks, we were very limited on what we could give families and so now, I have to project out that remote learning is going to be a factor in public education at some level in and out, so we are, we are trying our best to get everybody, it really needs to be a full one-to-one. Families of four and five children sharing one or two, we were giving out two systems if you had four or five children, but even that becomes a scheduling nightmare, we need to get to the one-to-one position and so any funding that we can secure, that piece is not going away, so we just have to make sure K through 12 is covered so that this can't ever happen again. And we're also securing hotspots because it has not been easy for our families to get access. They've tried, they've gone to the companies, they've called, they've been denied, whatever the reasons may be, so we are in the process of getting more hotspots, but we need more, we've realized that it's a bigger need than we thought, so it's on. Paula, can you just say where the current hotspots are, just for anybody who happens to see this? Sure, around the city and maybe Dean can help out a little bit too, but if you, you drive into the Lemonster Library in the parking lot, you can have access. The Senior Center, there's a hotspot, that one works really well, I've tried that one out myself. There's also a hotspot on the far side next to the parking lot at Lemonster High School. Those seem to have pretty strong signals, so if families had to get access, they could, but we're actually trying to secure as many individual hotspots as possible. We talked about maybe having a remote bus going around, but it really is, it's imperative to get it into the hands of the families. So I know we have other spots. What about some of our larger housing complexes? So Dean, did you want to weigh in on that? State, Litchfield or wherever?
The first thing families should do is apply for the Comcast Essentials Program. So if you have not had internet through Comcast for three months and you qualify and it means free and reduced lunch, there are so many, you qualify for assisted, assisted compensation for housing, there are a bunch of categories which most of our students fall into, they will give it to you for free for two months and then after that, it's $9.95 a month and we can help them with the $9.95 a month if they can't before that. So that's called Comcast Essentials Program and they get free internet, so they don't really have to use a hotspot and they just couldn't, you know, you can't, you can't be a customer that's already has it and then call and say, well, we want the, you know, the free one. It has to be somebody that hasn't had it for at least three months through Comcast and then they will offer you that two months free, but you got, you only got to the end of this month to apply for it, so that's, that we're trying, we're really encouraging that beyond anything because then you don't have to drive and sit behind the library, you can sit in your home.
Yeah, so we'll push that out again from our end to try and get families out there. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Dean. Or Ron rather, I'm sorry.
Okay, the first question is to Paula or Kimberly or Renee, whoever wants to answer the question, when you talk, when you're saying that the hotspots, do you know how big the hotspot is? Because the hotspot is relational to, to, to the portal that it carries. Do you have any idea how wide of a portal it is, the hotspots? Renee or can somebody jump in?
So Paula just showed you what it looks like. A spot, we might be able to put like two or three people on it, up to maybe 10. I know we've had that, we all have one if we go out and if we're all together, but sometimes it doesn't, it's not going far, if that's what you mean, like I can't put one hotspot in one family at Litchfield and it's going to cover the whole Litchfield. So the hotspots are really for individual use.
True.
All right. The other question is, it's either for Kim or Renee, you know, you was, I believe Kimberly was saying about the, they were, they had tried using Zoom and Google for the remote for schooling. Have you found which one is more efficient, Zoom or Google? And does that kind of tell you or give you an indicator of what's going to, you know, further down the field for the, for the rest of the school? No, yes?
We've been using, we, for our students, we really like to use Google because it's a safer format for us to use. We've been using a Zoom a little bit more with teachers getting together and talking and having conferences or maybe even having a team meeting, we'll use Zoom, but for our students, we've really been using the Google platform and it's been working quite well, people are getting really efficient with it, it's really a pretty user-friendly program.
Right. Steve, Steve just sent something on his phone.
So Ronnie, he was just clarifying, it's 10 to 15 devices on that one hotspot.
In that one area?
So that one hotspot can have 10 to 15 devices.
Like Paula was saying about in the library or the Veterans Center, they can tolerate 10 to 15.
Yes.
Yes.
They have, they've got some really nice hotspots there, theirs are very, very strong.
Okay, I was just, I was just, just asking, that's all, thanks.
Does anybody else have anything they would like to ask? Nice job, Team Summer. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
And undertaking, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes for our May 18th, 2020 meeting.
I'm moving to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mike, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Or Ron.
Any corrections? Any omissions, corrections or errors? Ooh, nice job, Christine, all right. Get all those in favor, say aye or raise their hand.
Aye.
All right, motion carries and then we'll move on to subcommittee reports and we have Finance up, Michael.
So Finance met tonight, we have some warrants that Isabel will read out to us in a moment. We reviewed our standing, we believe at this point that we have, we have some savings from being at home and expect that those savings will be enough to cover the extra health insurance that we hadn't budgeted for, so the business department is predicting that we are, we're confident for the third year in a row, we are not going to ask for an additional appropriation to balance the budget, that we should be finishing, maybe a little bit left over, but not much.
That's awesome. Great job, everyone.
Oh yeah, people have been working hard and next year probably will be harder since we, what's going on. But, so I think with that, we should go ahead and Isabel, do you want to read the warrants we have in front of us?
Absolutely. So tonight, we did warrants 43 to 47 in the Grants and Revolving Funds, so warrant 43 for the amount of $146,522.78. Warrant 44 for the amount of $97,526.71. Warrant 45 for the amount of $166,802.62. Warrant 46 for the amount of $109,522.64. And lastly, warrant 47 for the amount of $368,781.1.
And then we had 43 through 47 from the general fund. Do you have those? They're on the.
Isabella?
Are they? Yep.
They're on the back of the cover sheet.
Oh, okay.
If you don't see them, I can read them, it's fine, I'll go ahead and do that. We also have warrants from the general fund, 43 through 47, warrant 43 in the amount of Warrant 44 in the amount of $346,437.77. Warrant 45 in the amount of $2,015,111.06. Warrant 46 in the amount of $383,316.09. And warrant 47, an amount of $2,226,925.05. The Finance Committee has reviewed and approved these minutes, so I would move that we, sorry, not minutes, warrants, so I move that the full school committee approve the warrants.
I'll second.
Sorry, thank you, I was muted. So we have a first and a second, any questions? All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. Policy Subcommittee, I do not believe there's been any meetings.
We haven't had any meetings in policies, we're due to have one sooner or later.
15th.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be our regular scheduled, okay, perfect. So then we're going to move on to action items and the first thing up is the vote on the Chartwells contract, if I can have a motion?
I'll make a motion unless someone else wants to jump in.
All right, Ron made the motion to approve the contract, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have lots of seconds, so we have a first and a second, any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries, that's great. Now we're moving on to old in new business. We sort of talked about enrollment a little bit, Superintendent, in your report, is there anything else that we need to know about? Nope, enrollment is steady, we're still enrolling for FY20 as families move to this community, we're, we're actually enrolling for FY20 and FY21 currently, so it's. And what about kindergarten? I know last time we had about 100 students enrolled, has that increased at this point?
It has.
It has and while we've asked, we've let parents know that the case screenings, that they had, they already had schedules, but those will happen in their individual buildings when the doors open, so not to worry about that, we need to just enroll our students and get them on rosters. Okay, great, thank you. I have a couple of items, one is that the school committee needs to do Paula's end of the year evaluation, so typically Sue, myself and Isabel had been on the committee, I don't know whether Isabel and Sue, you wish to continue to be on the evaluation committee?
I do.
Okay, so generally, we only have three people, we could have up to four if somebody else felt strongly that they wanted to partake, but typically for the new members, you know, Chris, if you could please send us out an evaluation form that we've used previously, Paula usually will submit some information and evidence about her goals, I know she supplied us with some things for her mid-year discussion and we would look at those items and everybody would be responsible for filling out the evaluation and returning them to me and then Isabel, Sue and I would, you know, meet to go over them and come up with a final document, so we really need to present that to Paula, you know, really by July at the latest, so we need to get working on that. If anybody has any other questions about that?
The others, yeah. Okay, so Ronnie and I had gone to the new evaluation tool and we really hadn't had much opportunity to talk about it, so I think we need, Chris, did you get that tool? Did Ron give it to you or?
We have it.
Okay. Okay, so I don't know if it's really self-explanatory or whatever, but we might want to take a look at it, Eileen, before it goes out, because.
Sure.
So Chris, if you could just forward it to us and, you know, will we do it and make sure it's, you know, self-explanatory?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Excellent, thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris. All right, the other question I had really from Glenn was that the certification statement, we're still waiting for the city to sign off on it, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Eileen, in the year, this will be the fourth year I've been here for this, the certification statement has not been signed by Lemonster Public Schools or Lemonster City in over a decade. And integral to that, integral to that is having a, an agreement between the city and the school department on what city charges will be for school-related services. Those are two issues that have been longstanding, are always in our audit reports and there's just no progress.
Because I know we just got notification of that, saying that it could impact our funding, so I was just trying to clarify if there was any movement in that area.
Right, so, I mean, the state has the power to withhold our Chapter 70 funds if they choose to do so until they get that certification statement. So far, each year, they have threatened but not done so. It's supposed to be signed by the comptroller and the chair of the school committee and the superintendent. I personally would not recommend to the chair or the superintendent to sign it if the comptroller doesn't because we're certain that the report's accurate, so if the financial officer won't certify it's accurate, I wouldn't go out on a limb and certify myself personally, but that's, that's where we sit, if the comptroller won't sign it, then it's not signed.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that and update, Sue?
So Dean, where you're on the phone, can you speak to this? Hello? Dean?
Yep, yep, I can, I can hear you. Yeah, so we're, we may be able to cast some light on that, I thought we were pretty close when we met in the fall, we might be able to cast some light on it, we have, just waiting for our last audit, the last pieces of the audit to come in and when that's done, I think we'll be able to take another. And when that's done, I think we'll be able to take another look at it. But I thought we were pretty close last time on what all the track backs were.
Right, but we're looking. We're, we're looking for a signature on the annual report. The state's holding funds, I mean, what, you know, what's the goal here?
State's not holding funds.
They're threatening to.
They're threatening to. Okay.
That's correct, the letter says, right? Yep.
Okay, but I, I'd like to bring up another issue though, Dean, while, while you're on. You know, we had a finance subcommittee meeting tonight and, you know, you know, the school, the school is going to be in, you know, a serious financial constraints next year. Obviously state funds, state revenue is not there, whatever. And, you know, I would like to see us meet with the city council, have a joint meeting so that we can go over, you know, the priorities of the school district, the priorities of the city and see what we can do to mitigate some of the shortcomings that, that are going to impact us.
Yeah, no, no prob, I mean, the priorities are getting funding from, you know, I mean, obviously we're going to meet our obligation. I'm not sure what, where the state is on it, but, you know, our obligation is to fill every classroom with, with teachers and get them the materials that they need. I mean, priority, right? Prioritize things, so I think everybody's pretty much on the same page as what the priorities are. And, and, and it's just, it's just at the end of the day, it's, will the state be able to meet its commitment to education in the state, not just here in the city?
Well, they're not going to be able to meet the commitment they've been giving us, we know that.
Well, I don't know. Well, I don't know that true until they notify us that. So we, we don't know what the numbers are, they haven't told us what the numbers are. And, and, and so we're, we're hopeful and optimistic but yet cautious. So I wouldn't, you know, I prepare for everything, but I, I, I wouldn't say that we know because I don't know that we have not been notified of any changes to the state budget at all. And remember, this would be, this would be year two in terms of their longer-term obligation. So we don't know whether they're going to meet that. We don't know what the school building assistance programs, I mean, no one knows anything, they have not said anything.
Right, we just know that revenue is not going to be there.
Well, no, but they have their stabilization account that, that it is an election year for the state representatives and as well as the Senate. And, you know, election years do interesting things. Interesting decisions are made in election years. So I, I, I'm cautiously optimistic.
So I guess.
Obligation as we do every year and, and you can count on that. But I'm, you know, until we know, until we, and, and I'm, I assume, you know, most places, if you look at Salem, just Google that, look at what the budget shot falls they're predicting are. And there are many other communities already have, have started to make adjustments already just because they're in trouble this year, not even waiting till next year, so. But until we get the numbers, I, I, I don't know how anybody could know, but just obviously be prepared, not panic.
Right, I mean, I think everyone is, you know, proceeding with cautious, cautious caution because it does not look positive, certainly. Isabel, I know you had wanted to speak.
I, I think Sue covered pretty much everything I was going to say. I mean, I was just going to add that in the economical standing that the state is in right now, I wouldn't put it past them of them withholding our Chapter 70 funds. So just wanted to throw that out there.
But also, Eileen, I'd like to see us try to schedule something with the city council. We, we haven't met with them, I think we need to get our priorities on the table with them. I, you know, I, I just think we need to be proactive and not reactive at this point. So at least if we meet with them, we can tell them, you know, what, what we anticipate and, you know. Yeah, I, I think it needs to be said, I mean, we're all, you know, we're all in this together. And, you know, we, we don't want to see the school system decimated because of, you know, the, the state of affairs. So.
Melissa?
So, yeah, just to echo what everyone is saying, I know informally I've bumped into other members of the city council who just are wanting to know what's happening with the schools because they may not have kids in the schools themselves. So they're wanting to know what the past years looked like, what planning for next year is. And although we don't, there's a lot of unknowns, I think they need to know what the current impact is in terms of the insurance budgeting and transportation. So again, whatever we can get on the calendar with them, I think would be beneficial to all of the members of the city council. So there's that. And then separately, I just wanted to say another round of praise to the teachers during the last week with lots of sadness and tragedy during a global pandemic, to the teachers who have continued to reach out and check in on kids and really try to be there while they can't. So thanks again to all the staff in the district who've really reached out.
So Superintendent, if you can, please request a joint meeting with the city council, with the school committee. And that sounds like that would be something that would be beneficial to everyone just to, you know, connect and be able to, you know, sort of give an update of what's going on with us and they can give us an update of what's going on, you know, citywide that they're dealing with.
I think that's a great idea. This is, this, it's an extraordinary situation. And so I don't want them to read about our actions on the front page of the paper and not understand the thinking that went behind it. Because there's a ton of work going, going on every single day. So I do believe that this is a city effort, so I appreciate Sue making that recommendation.
Yeah, very timely. And I think to piggyback on, you know, Melissa's, you know, statement, you know, we certainly need to thank all of our teaching staff, but also I know the support staff have been working hard as well as certainly our administration has been working tirelessly to put in many plans and options together. So we appreciate all of them. But also to parents who have never imagined that they would be trying to teach their, you know, children while trying to potentially work and make sure they have food on the table and everything else. Not only with the pandemic, but certainly with the latest crisis that's been going on around racial injustices and inequalities. So we want to, you know, acknowledge that that also might be impacting a lot of our families. We are a very diverse community, so certainly we need to be mindful of that as well. So I just wanted to, you know, recognize that there's been a lot of hard work from a lot of people during very difficult times.
I agree.
Could I, this is Dean, I just wanted to say one other thing. I think if we're going to ask for a meeting with the school committee, and I'm speaking as a school committee member, not as me, I'm sorry, to with the city council, it's really going to be important when you say, you know, when Susan says, we want to share our priorities. Well, priorities are one thing, but priorities in difficult budget times, if you're suggesting that the state may not keep its commitment, then I would suggest that you're prepared to go to the city council and say, you know, and I'll tell you, I'm going to switch hats here for a minute. My priority as mayor of the city is to fill every classroom and make sure there are teachers and materials and special education. Those are my priorities, that will be my recommendation to the city council. I hope that when the school committee gets there, it doesn't, you know, it, it, it says, you know, we anticipate, as, it's already been stated, I've heard a number of fellow members say, we anticipate budget cuts. But we want to share with the city council what our priorities are. Well, if you're going to make that statement, then you've got to show up and say, we anticipate budget cuts and here are our priorities. And I'm sharing with you as I put on my other hat, that my priorities are. And, and that's what I'll be looking for from the school committee, as I wear this hat, that we're going to fill our classrooms with, with teachers and materials and whatever it is that they need along with special education and the support and backup that they need. And so I think before we make the statement, we want to go to the city council and share our priorities. They're in the same boat as everyone else. They're going to have to wait and see what, they're going to have to wait and see exactly what state aid is available. And if there are any cuts, then it's a matter of, you know, prioritizing. And so I think we need to have our own conversation in the school committee. I know as mayor, what my priorities are, but I think we need to have our own conversation about that and that needs to be placed on the agenda. And I think that needs to happen before we get to a city council meeting where we're just going to say we want all the money and if there, you know, when they hear our, that's our priority. I mean, that's their priority too.
So I think that, you know, your priorities, Dean, are, I think, everybody's priorities, I would say, from the school committee because we all want the classrooms to be full and there to be sufficient teaching and we have the resources to support all of our special education students. So those are all of, I would hope would be everybody's priorities. And I think we'll have a better understanding of where some budget cuts are going to be made. And again, those things will be, need to be readjusted depending on how big, you know, our funding is impacted. So I know that the superintendent and administration has, you know, several sort of layers of plans depending on, you know, what the financial constraints look like. And we certainly can talk about that once we know a little bit, you know, more. But I would imagine that our next meeting, you know, we'll be talking a lot about the budget and what some of the cuts and what are we doing to prepare for those cuts. And we may be able to not cut as much as we thought we would have to, which would be a really great thing. But I think we need to hope for the best and plan for the worst.
I, I think we've all said that. I, I, I'm, I'm speaking to what Susan said. Susan said we need a, a meeting with the, with the city council because we need to share what our priorities are. Well, then we need to know what our priorities are and agree on those priorities prior to going to the city council meeting because they're well aware of what's going on. I mean, then they're in tune as, in tune as I am about what's, what's happening around the state in terms of revenue. So when we get there, they're going to be looking for, so, okay, what are the priorities? And if there are adjustments that need to be made, where, if the question's going to come back on the school committee, where are you prepared to make them? Because the city council can only cut the budget, they can't add to it. And, and, and then it's the school committee's decision on how to spend it. So truly us that needs to meet with them and say, hey, in case you've been wondering, here's the answer to those questions you've been thinking about. So I, I think we've got it in a little bit of a reverse situation as I understand the mechanics of the city council, how they like to operate. So that's just my point, this isn't something on the agenda tonight, we should really get it on the agenda and discuss it more in more detail.
Is there any other new or old business? I see, Ron, you have your hand up.
Well, my, my, my take on all this is regarding the word adjustments. I really believe that we are going to have to make a lot of adjustments with the schools and, you know, whether the monies come from the state or the federal government, because the whole, the whole, why can't him, am I, I'm not blocked off, no.
No.
If, if we, if, if the schools start opening up, operating minimally, you know, how to make these decisions about kids being on the bus, how many kids are going to be in the classes? We're not going to be able to limit, we're going to have to limit the, the amount of kids in the classes. And limiting the kids in the class will, will result in having more teachers, not less teachers. That's where you, when you're saying adjustments, fine, I'll buy the argument, Dean, but those adjustments are going to come with a cost that we have to, they have to be paid. You can't just think we're going to be cutting things, we're not going to be cutting, we're going to be bringing in things.
Right, I think, you know, that is another possibility, Ron, and we just don't know which, you know, case scenario is really going to play out. So that is going to be, like you said, you know, a work in progress. And we have to be very fluid and as transparent as possible so families, you know, know what to expect. It's difficult now because none of us know what to expect and there's too many unknowns out there. But I do know that we have many contingency plans, so that is helpful. And those are related to budget, Dean, and I'm sure that, you know, the superintendent will be in better position to share some of those with us more specifically. So now, if there's no other new or old business, we have an executive session and I need someone to make a motion to go into executive session and then it'll be a roll call vote.
I'll, I'll, go ahead, no, I shouldn't be saying it, I say it too often. Go ahead, Brandon.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll second. So it's under chapter 39. To discuss contract negotiations needs to be the rest of the motion. And so we have a motion and a second, roll call vote. Ron?
Ah, yay.
Mike?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Sue?
Oh, you were muted, Sue.
Spacebar.
Yay.
Dean? Dean, it's a voice call vote.
I think that was a yay.
That was a yay.
Thank you, and a yay. So at this time, we would ask that Leamester TV, please sign off as we are in executive session.